Mayor, this evening we have a presentation about a proposed downtown development. And I believe Senator John Borden is going to kick it off.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Hamm, City Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present this evening. I'm John Borden with Harvest Capital. We're the investment group behind this project. I have Whitney Bill Schoeff from Lifestyle Hotel Group, Russ Taylor from Lifestyle Hotel Group, Jan Kaller from GMC, our architect, Chris Godbold, one of our development partners and the current landowner, and Patrick Moulton, who's also a development partner and current landowner with us. What we're going to present this evening, I think you'll see, is a thoughtful and transformative project here to redevelop downtown Auburn. We're incorporating a lifestyle hotel, which Bill and Russ will talk about, a placemaking retail for downtown Auburn with new tenants, a new parking deck, and an urban grocery store. We've not really finalized our design at this point, but have some preliminary renderings we wish to share. We're not in a position to mention any specific tenants tonight, but do want to walk you through this presentation and take time to answer questions from the council on this project. We think this is a very exciting project, and we hope you'll share enthusiasm on it. I want to introduce you to Jan Kaller, who's going to walk you through the design drawings at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mayor, City Council, my name's Jan Kaller. I'm with Goodwood Mills K Wood Architects out of Montgomery, Alabama. I'm very excited to be a part of this. I want to say that, you know, we're very interested in doing everything we can to maintain the character and image of downtown Auburn with this development, all parts of it. What we're showing tonight is really more of a massing study. The design has not developed to a point there. You know, we ask that you don't take too much away from the imagery that we're showing you. It's more about the volumes and the locations and the access ways that we're providing as part of this. You'll see here, we're looking at an axon that's looking over Tubers Corner towards the northwest. Along College, you'll see the proposed hotel, starting about mid-block. On Magnolia, there's a connecting alleyway, pedestrian alleyway that will route all the way back through to the hotel. The orange box that you're seeing there on top would be condos or apartments, multifamily. Below that would be an urban grocery store with dedicated parking for that grocery in the two mid-levels in between. Along the back, you're seeing the proposed deck by the seat, and how we would tie into that, we've worked out to utilize that deck to access the parking for the grocery and for the hotel, but while providing another access way, a separate access entrance to that parking deck. So. This begins to show a little bit of the elevations from College Street and from Wright Street, the top elevation. The hotel is basically to the right of the alley. That is the connecting alley that goes back to Magnolia. We're trying to be very mindful, from a scale standpoint, to break down the facade so that it's not, you know, this plain wall, that it maintains a human scale, it would have canopies, lots of finestrations, lots of ins and outs to provide shadow and context to that elevation. But the floor-to-floor heights, in order to meet kind of the criteria of the level of hotel that this wants to be, it pushes it up above the 65, up to a 75-foot height. So you're seeing really the top roof amenity part is the part that gets to the 75-foot height. But again, we're trying to break the scale. On the Wright Street elevation, you're seeing the parking deck, the city deck on the left, along with the Baptist Student Union Building below it to the right. Basically, the wall of the old hotel is a new urban grocery with two levels of parking above it, and then possible condominiums, apartments above that. This kind of shows a section through, and the top elevation, the top section kind of shows you a profile through College Street. College Street, building face to building face, is about 100 feet, and currently, the 65-foot ratio, that puts you at about a 1.5 to 1, 1.5 width to 1 height. And you're seeing the levels, how the hotel rooms would probably step back, the plates aren't as big, so their actual frontage elevation of that would be below even the current 65 feet, while the overall height of the building, to meet the amenities that are needed, would be at the 75-foot level. The bottom is really an elevation from Wright, from Tischner, kind of the Tischner cut-through just north of Regions. And again, just showing the relationship of the city deck to this development along College and the access, the additional access up to the parking deck from that elevation. Bill's going to talk more about the hotel. There we go. But this was just a quick image. You know, again, what's driving some of these heights is being able to provide the kind of spaces within this complex that are a high-volume restaurant, possibly two-level, that gives you a whole different kind of context and feel as part of this development. And that's why the overall height really needs to be at a level that's a little bit higher, at the 75-foot level. With that, I'll turn it over to Bill to talk about the hotel.
Thank you. Okay. Hi. My name's Bill Schoeff, and I'm one of the partners and president of Lifestyle Hotel Group. Our company is sort of a bit interesting. We have forged a relationship with Time Inc., and we are empowered by them contractually to be able to develop licensed lifestyle hotels that are built upon their media brands. At this point, we have four brands that we're working on: Sports Illustrated, Travel and Leisure, Coastal Living, and Southern Living Hotel. For Auburn, we have discussed with our partners bringing a Southern Living-branded hotel to Auburn, and it would be actually named Southern Living Hotel. It would be one of the first three that would be developed in the United States. And we will bring to Auburn, we think, the spirit and the ideas behind the Southern Living brand. Our arrangement with Southern Living is that we have complete support of their brand people, their marketing people, and more, oh, there we go. And it's not easy pedaling when you don't have a bike. Is that we are, let me see where I am. So basically, we have these four brands. For Auburn, we are in the process of developing, we hope, a hotel here that would carry the Southern Living brand, because we believe that that's the most fitting brand for Auburn and its history. What we do is we create the brand based upon the profiles that we get from Time Inc., Southern Living, about their people, what they're looking for, what they want, what they desire in a hotel, and then we craft that hotel to identify those people. In the case of Southern Living, we're talking about 20 million subscribers, which, to give you a relationship, is basically half or a little bit under half of what Marriott Rewards System has. In our total combined reach with Time Inc., our company will be able to reach 63 million different individual people to promote coming to Auburn and our other places to enjoy a hotel. We think that's going to be very important for this town. We think it's important for our, obviously, for our hotel to fill. And part of what we do with Southern Living is to create a property that...
Go back or forth? I may need to do it now, actually. Which way, you want to go back or? Next slide?
Next slide. There we go. I'll give it to you. I'm technologically challenged, so I don't know. I'm happy I didn't turn on a computer. The basic hotel, it will be 120 rooms. That number of rooms is important from the standpoint that we need to have a certain amount of critical mass within a property to be able to generate the investment returns for our capital. It's just a numbers game at some point. The height that's been discussed is really driven by the fact that there's a footprint, and we need to get a certain amount of stuff within the footprint, and you kind of run out of room as you keep going up. So we've studied this the last six months with the architects to do our best to see how we can maximize the footprint and do the best we can on an efficiency basis. In addition to the 120 rooms, we plan to have a destination restaurant. We plan to have a rooftop amenity with a pool. We are going to have 8,000 to 10,000 square feet of meeting space, and we plan to bring a wellness center to this hotel. One of our contractual obligations with Time Inc. and Southern Living is that we must run a four- or five-star property. We do not have the option to do a limited-service property. It's not frankly what I've done for 45 years. So our task is to bring a high-end, full-service deluxe hotel to Auburn under the Southern Living brand. Next slide, please. We have some pictures that we gave to the architect, but because of the location in Auburn, we see a building that reflects a little bit of an old warehouse loft, big windows, lots of light inside kind of structure. These are just images that we provide to our architects to start to give them guidance. And then, next slide, please. And then when we travel into the hotel, you start to get a feeling for what the inside and outside will feel like. One of the other things that we are going to bring to the game is that we will partner with a company called Prefer Hotels, which is 50 years old, and they are what's known as a soft brand. They will provide us with a complete reservation system, an online reservation program, and a complete backbone that we need to hit the ground running to be able to make sure that we can handle the reservation loads that we expect. Next slide. The lobby. The lobby in our, in the Southern Living Hotel's going to be kind of fun. It's really not going to be a lobby. It's going to be more like a great big living room, because frankly, in today's world, you don't need a front desk. You check people in, and you just don't need them. So we're going to be much more communal, much more interesting, and part of the lobby is going to be a bakery. And we have received commitment from Southern Living that the bakery is going to be based on the 50 years of recipes in Southern Living magazine. So they have dedicated their master baker, who's been with them for 25 years, is going to work hand-in-hand with us on getting the recipes out of the archives and bringing that to this bakery in the lobby, which will also serve coffee and some other things on a quick go. The rooms are very, very large, by standard, 360 feet and above. The breakdown, you can see there. And we feel very, very, very important to us that these rooms are large, and they have great bathrooms and a nice height and good finishes and good lens. Next slide, please. So these are, this is a very quick list of the services that we will make available to people that stay in our hotel. It's a standard in our company. We will bring twice daily maid service to Auburn, which is not normal, but it means when you leave for dinner, when you come back, your room's been turned down, you have fresh linen. So everything that we try to do is of a very high scale. Next slide. The restaurant. The restaurant is really important to us. We actually think of ourselves as running restaurants with rooms. My background is starting off in food and beverage. I was a kitchen rat before I went off to school, and I started my career in food and beverage. So restaurants are the centerpiece of how we do things. So for us, the restaurant has to be a destination. It has to be great. The food has to reflect the region, and it has to be local and locally sourced. So we have lots of interesting things we're talking in that area, which we'd love to share with you as we flesh them out. Rooftop. So on the rooftop, we're going to have a pool, which we think is kind of fun. And as part of that rooftop, we're also going to have a very large, well, not very large, a very open deck area where you can overlook the town and see the campus of Auburn and enjoy that. Our wellness center will be not just a spa, but we will have a fitness center, and we will have yoga and other kinds of aerobic classes so that people can enjoy that. That's part of our marketing to a certain demographic that we'll be trying to attract in addition to the normal. Private events, for us, that's the bread and butter for us. It's an important part of our business model, and we hope to do a very good job at that. But our focus with private events will be much more socially oriented than typically commercially oriented or business-oriented. So you can see by the imagery that the ballroom will have a less commercial feel to it and more residential feel to it. Excellent. Who are we trying to get? Pretty simple, 20 million dedicated Southern Living subscribers, which is a lot of people, and all their friends and family. We have commitment from Southern Living for full-page ads, the ability to tap into their e-marketing, into their database, to do joint promotions with them. They will host a grand opening, and it will be a project that will be taken to the magazine as we're developing the hotel, and will be pre-marketed by the magazine in advance of opening. So at the end of this, we are here asking your cooperation to try and get this hotel off the ground. We are very excited. We think it's a great, a great opportunity. We are very fond of Auburn. I live down on the beach, but my partner actually just moved here, so he lives down the street. And it's, and we think that Auburn would be a great fit, and we think we'd be a great fit for Auburn. We realize the character and the history of the town. We think that Southern Living brings that character and history with it, and we will work hand-in-hand with your folks and them to deliver something I think that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Now, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer questions on projects.
Anybody? Yes. So Southern Living probably could have chosen a number of places to go. There's certainly other college communities, other small towns. Why was Auburn the target for y'all's first project?
I'm sorry? I need to hear it very well.
Why was Auburn the location that you guys picked for this first-ever Southern Living?
Well, we actually have three locations. We have one in Birmingham, one in Auburn, and one in Oxford. And one of the things that drives us is Southern Living's love affair with certain towns. And Southern Living has a pretty strong love affair with Auburn. So we compiled a list of targeted towns that we want to develop in. I've been in this business 45 years, and I've always never worked in a big-box hotel. I've always done small, high-end properties. And I've always enjoyed working in not New York, not LA, not Chicago, not where everything else goes. We think it's a better, it's a better fit for us and more interesting for us to bring a high-quality product to a town like Auburn that appreciates it but may not have that product. So that's why we decided to come here. Frankly, if the location weren't as compelling as it is, we may, may, may not have thought about it, but when we heard where it was, it was pretty easy to make that decision.
Thank you.
Sir, I don't think you mentioned the heights that you needed in order to build the hotel. Maybe you did, and I just missed it, but you need 75 feet in order to build the hotel. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the thing that drives that is pretty simple. For a hotel of this quality, you have to have about 20 feet on the first floor with the lock wheels. And because of the way the footprint sets up, the ballroom and the meeting rooms need to be on second level. Well, a ballroom needs 14 to 16 to 18 feet, because that's just how that works. And then inside our rooms, we need nine and a half feet clear to have the height that makes the room feel the right way it needs to feel to be a four- or five-star product. So when you just sort of add up the layers, you just get to 75 feet to hit the 120 within the box that we're working with. If we had a bigger box, if we don't, then we just spread it out.
Thank you. So the park that's over 65, is the rooftop amenity, is there any other part?
That is correct. It's positive.
So basically, we pop, we get right up against the top of the rooms, and then the rooftop amenity, which is not the whole floor, it's a very small part of it, is what protrudes above that level.
So that's the only part that's above 65?
Yes, sir.
The parapet, the actual parapet of the top main building is about, at this point, is about 68. That may move up and down slightly, but that would be the main box that you see. The bigger volume would be at about 68.
In your slide, it's looking at the overall development, the footprint of the development. It looked like there were a lot of varying heights in that. What is the range of those for the town? What would be the average height of a street-level facing complex?
Can we go back to that, maybe the section is actually the better one to look? Again, we're very early in the process, so this is still scratch, probably the next slide. If you see here, this is a section looking north, kind of cut through the hotel lobby, which was that range that you showed. We're actually showing about 17.6 there. The next is the meeting rooms at about 32. Then each floor level would be 11 feet floor-to-floor, and so the roof of the third level would be at about 65 feet, but we would have a parapet above that, which would stretch it out probably to 68 or so. And then the rooftop amenity, which is stepping back from the street, the plate for the rooms don't necessarily have to be quite as big as the mono plate. We're hoping to have some modulation there, so you've got some balconies or potential to back that off of the street a little bit. And then the rooftop amenity itself would be even further back from the street. So the feel of the plane of the wall that traditionally you're walking down the street is actually below the, you know, the 65. It's not a straight plane up to the 65 feet.
So the hotel could be built at 65 feet. That covers the roof.
No, well, the rooftop amenity is a critical part of the development. So it needs that, and in order to have that rooftop amenity, it needs to go above the 65 feet.
You also need three floors of rooms, is that correct, sir?
That's correct. Plates are not big enough to be able to get the number of rooms on two plates. You have to go through plates.
And the parking that you're planning on providing on the site, how much parking are you planning on adding in addition to what the city is providing in this? How is that going to work?
Well, I think we're working with the city potentially with, hopefully, to be able to share some of that parking that's in, that could be part of the city deck. You know, we're, that we're evolving it to dedicate to the hotel.
But the, so the original city deck that we're looking at would...
The original city deck. The idea would be that we would need some additional space that we don't have, that they would have to, would have to make an agreement to get that additional space to the north, to make the deck slightly larger. Our idea for our deck was 400 possible spaces, 350 to 400. If we get additional space to the north, we could make the deck a little bit lower and go 600, possibly 600 spaces. The problem with the 600-space deck going up to Wright Street is that's too many cars to go onto Wright Street, but if we can get an extension of Tischner on the north side of the parking deck, then we can't have that as an issue there, which would allow for a different vehicle, but...
That's Tischner going through from College to Wright.
That's Tischner going through from, across College all the way to Wright Street.
Right. Which is a lower elevation there, kind of shows what that view would be from Tischner.
Yeah. That, this ramp, you can kind of see deck hotel entrance there. That would be an additional ramp that would allow, you know, for valet parking. The motorport for the hotel would be behind the hotel on the other College Street. So that's where you would valet park, and then they can transfer those to the parking deck from there. And that would give a secondary egress from the parking deck, one at Tischner, kind of cut through, and one at Wright Street.
So there's, so our original deck plan had one access from Wright?
Correct.
And this could potentially have three accesses?
Correct.
Actually, two.
Two?
Two accesses.
Two accesses and three?
But it could have three if it came off of College, if there was an entrance from out of College.
There was that Tischner, right.
Yeah.
The Tischner extended across to the other side of College. So the, so with this plan, from a parking perspective, it would add parking to serve their need, plus it would add additional public parking?
Yes.
Is that correct? How many additional spaces?
Well, we would say six, I mean, the way we have not made any, any deal, but if, say the deck was 600 spaces, that's 600 public parking spaces. Now, obviously, the hotel is going to need some, but we have not said that you're going to take 120, and that alleviates those from the public. Could be that on Monday, only 30 of those are needed. On Friday, it may be 120. But any spaces that are not taken up will be available for the public. So overall, we are increasing, our commitment was, we were trying to get 300 additional spaces. Our commitment now would be more spaces than that, even though there's going to be an additional need for some of those spaces.
Can you talk about the condominiums and multi-unit residents on the, above the grocery?
Yeah, why don't you go back one slide to...
And just to be clear, that parking is in addition, and that's not, the parking that's underneath that condominium is not part of the city's parking.
That's correct. Really, on this, on this side, again, we're trying to get a little bit of density and take advantage of the structure that we've got there. So that hasn't been developed out as to exactly what that would be, but the concept now is the most likely probable use would be for a condo apartment-type complex above the deck, above the grocery tenant.
But again, it has its own type of parking for that.
Could you go back one more picture? I think it's the first slide that showed looking down on the property that the city bought from the Baptists. How is that deal being worked out to use that property that goes up to College Street in front of the deck?
I, you want to address the property?
Yeah. We don't have a slide that shows this.
I don't have one in here that shows that.
So the Baptist property kind of is the middle section where that current, well, it says city deck cutting through. And so the discussion would be, if we provide some additional land that we would control, we would enter some sort of swap arrangement to allow the city to build the larger deck in exchange for frontage on College Street.
And the alleyway off of Magnolia on the, I guess, the west side of Oak Tree, between the yellow and the barn building, would that be a public access alleyway?
This would, yes, this would be a public... This would, yes, this would be a public access. Currently, it's about 20 feet wide. It would go all the way up through and back around really the old theater building and cut back to College at this point right here. So that would, this potentially would be some patio space for the restaurant tenant that's here so that they could break out and be also part of the motorport, which would be back here. One thing we failed to mention was, is we're also providing an elevated deck here on the backside of the hotel project as a green space for the hotel, as an amenity there as well.
And a timeline, if this were a perfect world, if this were to be approved, a timeline for project in the phases?
Yeah, so we'd like to get shovels in the ground first next year. There's a design process, and what you're seeing tonight are preliminary renderings. Based on getting, you know, the height that we need to do the project, we would immediately engage in going further design that would let us price and build a project starting early next year.
How long would it take after you start?
Yeah, that's always a good question. Yeah, until you design, you don't know. I mean, we're estimating probably a construction schedule on something like this is around 14 months or so. And we, and we'd like to do it all to the extent we can at once. We understand the city may start building the deck, obviously, much prior to that. We probably have, you know, a design schedule that's going to take us to the end of the year on design, start construction early next year. Potentially, we could start the grocery park at a different time because those two things
The retail space that's currently owned, how much retail space is in this plan front of College, and how does that compare to how much retail space is there?
Yeah. So if you go down one more slide then? So if you look here, what we're counting is the restaurant is part of that, the coffee bakery shop is part of that, the hotel lobby would be in the middle, that wouldn't be part of it. But then from there on, it would be retail all the way back down to the current property line at Tischner, and that's approximately 19,000 square feet total. And currently, they're...
How much are they now? 15,000 without those...
So we're adding, you know, effectively adding a restaurant that we pegged at about 5,000 square feet and about 19,000 square feet of additional retail. It's really replacing retail that had been there.
Can you maybe talk about the current state of the current buildings there and the shape that they're in and the, what it would take to rehab those buildings if we were to, say, somebody wanted to go that route, to rehab the current facades and buildings that are there now?
I mean, I know from an investor's standpoint, we would not do that. It just wouldn't be interesting to us. I mean, those buildings are pretty dated, and just maintaining them would be a challenge to do. So I know from our perspective, the project wouldn't work from a renovation standpoint. I don't know if anyone else in my group has other comments on that. We want to bring something, you know, new and exciting and, as Bill was saying, you know, renovating, you know, he wants to do modern floor plates and larger ceiling heights, and that's the sort of thing you need for today's hotels and retail.
The grocery store component of it, I know you said you didn't have, weren't ready to announce, you might be considering, but do you have, do you have interest in that space?
We do. Very much do, yes.
Is somebody we've heard of?
Somebody, yeah.
So, yeah, how many square feet in the grocery ballpark?
Yeah, so we're talking in the, and Ian could speak more to that, 25,000 to 28,000 square feet, yeah.
Yeah, 25,000 to 28,000, depending on the amount of certain stock that we need to provide for them.
So I mean, we'd like to do, you know, if we could get to 28, we'd like to do as big as we can. But it's an urban store, and it's a store they expect a lot of folks to be walking to or riding bikes to. So, you know, obviously, it has some impact on traffic, but a lot of it will be, you know, folks walking between downtown and dorms and that sort of thing, student houses.
Just one more point, too. I think one of the critical things for that tenant is, and what, where we, oh, I'm sorry. You know, grocery stores really want flat parking lots so cars don't roll, so, you know, the city deck is really a helix ramp, you know, you've got very few. So that's why we've now moved to actually dedicating some parking that doesn't take away from the, from the public parking and gives the grocery tenant some control over that. It would be a gate system, validated system, so that we could ensure that the tenant has always got the parking spaces they need provided there. And it would be on a flat plate. And those would be accessed actually utilizing the ramp system of the city deck.
Now, would the parking places also be for the condos in those same two?
That's correct. That's correct. We would have to study exactly how that all flushes out.
Right, yeah. We anticipate, and that's a point you could even study, but they have separate parking to, probably if they turn out to be condos, they'd have to be private reserved spaces for the condo.
Yeah, right, understood. All right, any other questions for these folks?
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.